It's six thirty when I call the meeting to order. Let's please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve or amend this tonight's agenda.
I'm sure. Do it.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Any discussion?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student advisory vote?
I say aye.
Perfect. All right, motion passes. Are there any public comments, Jackie? None, okay. We'll roll into our student board member comments. He made it.
What have you got to say?
Up until today, there wasn't much going on. We have, we're just preparing for prom. That's coming up on May thirteenth. That's the big thing. It's hard because I've been so busy, I haven't caught everything that's been going on. But I know the shipbuilding class that we've been doing is going pretty well. They just got a fiberglass boat out of the mold the other day that they're pretty proud of. So that class is doing very well. As far as the event today went, it was quite a success. We had some bumps in the road, literally. And we had people not follow through on a couple of things. And but we were able to pull it together with what we had. And it seemed to make an impact on the kids. I was talking to our English teacher, Kelly Reichstein. And she was saying normally she has this class full of freshmen and a couple sophomores, normally loud, rowdy. They were dead silent afterwards.
Dead silent.
Yeah.
Wow.
And they were able to have a good conversation on why you shouldn't drink and drive. So tomorrow, all the kids will come back. There'll be a small memorial of life, celebration of life section. And at the, our assembly we're going to hold, then we're actually going to bring all the kids back alive, show everyone what happened. And then Washington State Patrol, the Sheriff's Department, and Central Mason Fire will all give a talk on their, their aspects of it.
Did Washington State Patrol, Central Mason, and what was the third?
And then the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, the sheriff.
What time is that?
That will be at nine tomorrow. So. Yeah, but that's all I have.
I'm wondering if we can share some of those photos now, Jackie, since it is germane. It sounds like John sent in some photos.
It was great, if I can say, because Brooke was a member of the Fire Commissioner, they've got special tools for prying open cars.
They did bring in the jaws of life and cut it open. I'm not sure if you can see it, but in front of the car, there is a gray blob. That's actually a student.
I see that.
We couldn't do a head-on collision, so I just told Jake, okay, you're going to lay under the car. Everyone else get in the car and be dead. And that, that, they seemed to have pulled it off magically.
And the, the young man that was, one young man was dead, and he was bloody. And I told him that I've seen dead people, and he is better than dead people I've seen. I mean, he was just superb.
Did a great job.
Utterly relaxed into the thing.
Well, and I think we, we just need to recognize too, for our audience out here, that this was all pulled together to, to mimic what it would be like if something terrible happened.
Yeah, an actual crash. It was set so as the kids were coming down, it was right after the crash happened. So.
Yeah, I think it's also, sorry to interrupt, Morgan.
Go ahead.
It's really important to note that there was a lot of counseling support today because while these kinds of events are very powerful learning experiences, they can also seriously trigger memories for students and staff and, and really create some very strong anxiety, discomfort, sadness, all, all different kinds of emotions. So.
Sure.
Part of pulling together an event like this is assuring that there are people available to help people deal with all of their reactions. Because while the, the intent is to teach a lesson about, please think about what you're doing and, and don't drink and drive, we, we don't want to have an event that would cause significant trauma to someone who may have already been traumatized by events in their lives. So I will, I think our staff and the Fire Department worked, and our student leaders worked really hard to ensure that they had those pieces in place as well. So although the fun, cool stuff is the yucky pictures, I, I think it's important to note that all of that was an important part of the planning piece as well.
Yes, we did pull every counselor from here at upper campus to help any kids. We made, we had the library doors wide open. And then we made sure to make it very clear that if kids needed any sort of counseling or support or anything, that they could go to them. Luckily, after talking to the counselors, I don't think very many kids came in, which is a good thing. So, but they were there if anyone needed them. And then they will also be there again tomorrow if anyone needs them.
Thanks, thank you for the comments. Yeah, what a great event, and so important. Oh, we are at the consent agenda. We've all had a chance to take a look at these items ahead of time. These are matters that have been delegated to the superintendent, but we do have to approve them per state law. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda or would be happy to hear discussion.
Adam Sherman, I move that we approve the consent agenda, is given.
Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will take the student board member vote first.
I say aye.
Great, and the board member vote?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor and the motion passes. Just rolling right along. So we don't have our transportation presentation today, yeah.
Our assistant director had a medical issue that needed to have them be excused from tonight. And our director is driving, helping drive teams to athletic events because we had so many, although they probably got up to Port Angeles and are on their way back because of the weather. So, so they will report in May instead.
That sounds good. Well, we're already at our superintendent update then and budget status update.
Happy April, everybody. Good to be here. And just want to thank you for your time. And I'm here to present the budget status report. Excuse me, my, I got like a frog in my throat here. As of March thirty first, twenty twenty-three. And we're going to begin with the other funds, fund balance report, starting with the capital projects fund. At the end of March, the fund balance for our capital projects was at three hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-one. That's an increase of five thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars. The fund balance for our debt service fund was at eight hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred eighty-one, which is an increase of two hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars. That increases due to the collection of local taxes. The ASB fund balance was at four hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-four, an increase of five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars over the previous month. And actually, that's a decrease rather of five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. And then the transportation vehicle fund and balance at the end of March was at two hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars. And you notice there, that's a decrease of two hundred thirty-five thousand, fifty-one dollars. And that's due to the purchasing of two new buses. Onto the next page, we're going to look at attendance. Excuse me. So this is as of our April count, which was right after spring break, when the students came back from spring break and we did count. Our total enrollment was two thousand, two hundred fifty-three point nine-nine, or two, two thousand, two hundred fifty-four students. That's a, a decrease, fourteen FTE fewer than last month. And it, and I, I believe that really has to do with some early graduation, a large part of that. Our budgeted fund balance, if you looked at the far right, is two thousand, two hundred sixty point four. And our average for the year so far is two thousand, two hundred forty-three point eight. Okay, and we're going to move on to the general fund status report. Excuse me. I drank some tea before coming in here. It's been pretty strong tea. Mint tea, I think it was a little bit too strong. So. Once we have that ready, I'll begin sharing the general fund status report as of March thirty-first, beginning with the revenue report. There we go.
Yeah.
So on the top left, that red dial there, it shows our total revenues, actual year-to-date compared to the projected. So percentage-wise, we're at fifty-five point thirty-three percent actual compared to our projected of fifty-six point forty-two percent. And then moving over to the purple, local sources, actual year-to-date was at fifty-one point six-five percent. And our projected was fifty-one point four-three. So we ended up pretty close to what we had projected. State sources of revenue, actual year-to-date, fifty-eight point five-five, there in blue. And our projected year-to-date was at fifty-seven point four-three. And then finally, the far right on the, in the green, our federal revenues, actual year-to-date, forty point seven-one, and we have projected fifty-four, fifty-four point seven-two. I'll just touch on a few of these revenue sources. Our apportionment year-to-date as of the end of March, twelve million, eight hundred sixty-one thousand, fifty-six dollars. And then local property tax, that's our levy. That's four down from the top, one million, nine hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-five. Then I'm going to jump down to investment earnings, fifty-three thousand, four hundred seventeen. I know that's just a small amount of money, but I just like to highlight how we're doing our best to invest our resources to get some return on those. At the very bottom there, I added this piece so that we could see these numbers by month. So our March state apportionment was three million, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred, just for the month of March. And then our March local property taxes received was two hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred twenty-eight. And our March investment earnings, nine thousand, three hundred fifty-five. On the left, to the next slide, please. So here we're comparing our projected year-to-date revenues to our, our budgeted, in blue there on the left, and also our current, in purple. So our projected year-to-date revenues for this point in time, end of March, was twenty-two million, six hundred twenty thousand. And we're close to that at twenty-two million, one hundred eighty-five thousand. Going on to the next slide, please. I wonder if the order, did you do two slides? Oh, I started to get made of, excuse me, they're stuck together. Okay, revenues by source. So here you can see local, state, and federal revenues comparing our projected to our current year-to-date. Just seeing how we are pretty close to what we had projected in those three sources. Now let's go on to revenues by source, prior year-to-date versus current year-to-date. So here we're comparing back to prior year-to-date three, which was twenty nineteen, twenty, in yellow, which really was the year when we first experienced the COVID pandemic and we had school closures towards the end of the year. But you can see that is the year closest to this current year in terms of a normal school year. And that's why there are some differences there, you know, when you look at the previous two years. So you can see our local, state, and federal revenues and compare across the years there. So the local, you can see that significant difference due to not having those levy dollars for a period of time until we, again, pass the left. Let's move on to the next slide. We're looking at expenditures for the period ending March thirty-first. So on the top left in green, our projected year-end balance as a percentage of our budgeted expenditures was at ten point four-two percent, which is a good place to be. Total expenditures, actual year-to-date, was fifty-five point one-eight. And our projected was sixty point seven-two, so not too far off there. In purple, you can see salaries and benefits, actual year-to-date, our percentage at the end of March was fifty-seven point seven-seven percent of our budgeted and our projected fifty-seven point eight-six. So again, pretty close. And then our basic at actual year-to-date, in blue there, fifty-three point oh-three percent actual compared to sixty point five percent projected. Our top ten expenditures include basic education at the top there, ten million, seventy-two thousand, one twenty-three. District-wide support, three million, four hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred eighty. Special education supplemental state at two million, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-three. Transportation, one million, two hundred ten thousand, seven hundred four. ESSER, nine hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-five. Food service, nine hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight. Voc Ed, eight hundred forty-five thousand, six ninety-five. ALE, alternative learning experience, at six hundred five thousand, four hundred six. LAPD, the learning assistance program that's state funding, five hundred thirty-six thousand, four thirty-eight. And then special ed federal, three hundred twenty thousand, four hundred eighty-seven. So that's really where our funds are going, how we're using our funds. Let's go on to the next page, please. This is a comparison of our total expenditures that we budgeted versus, and projected year-to-date versus our current year-to-date. So the budgeted is in blue, so we had budgeted for forty million, nine hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred forty-nine for our expenditures for the year. And our current year-to-date in purple there is twenty-two million, eight hundred thousand. And we have projected we'd be at twenty-five. So our expenditures are currently coming under our projected by a little bit. Okay, let's go to the next slide, please. This is expenditures by object, projected year-to-date versus current. So those objects are salaries for certificated, salaries for classified, our benefits, supplies, and project services. So here you can just compare how we projected versus where we currently are in those different objects. And then let's go on to the next slide, expenditures by object, our prior year-to-date versus current. So going again in yellow, if that's twenty nineteen, twenty, so you can see where we are currently in purple compared to the previous three school years in terms of expenditures. So you can see that certificated salaries are our largest expenditure. And then classified expenditures are showing there next. And then the benefits there are both certificated and classified employees together. And let's go on to the next slide, this is our fund balance report. So this shows our actual fund balance through March and then from April through August is projected. So our fund balance at the end of March was three million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred forty dollars. And our budgeted fund balance, what we had budgeted for in August is three million, two hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-eight. And above that, that purple line where it peaks there in August, over August, it shows our projected fund balance to be four million, three hundred four thousand, two hundred sixty-one. Now last month, when I showed you this, it showed our projected to be at four million, eight hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-three. So you can see there's already a decrease of five hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. Again, because this is not an actual number, it's a projection based on our current revenues and expenditures in the way that calculation is made within our Forecast Five system, within the dashboard. So. Three million, two hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-eight is what we budgeted. And that's really the figure that we want to be looking at as we continue through this fiscal year. Now at the bottom here, I put those numbers again, you know, so they're a little larger so you can see them because they're so tiny in that graph. So that, that's just a new piece that I had there. So it's a lot easier with your, if you're a visual learner like me, to see them that way, so. Uh, let's go on to the final page here. Um, here it's a summary and it's comparing our current year-to-date versus our budget and giving us a percentage of where we are right now in our revenues and expenditures. And we can also compare that to last year. So at the top on the right side, I just wanted to note our, for local tax revenues, one million, nine hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred six dollars. And I mentioned this figure earlier, is what our current year-to-date local taxes are that we've collected. And our budget, our levy is three million, eight hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-seven. And so far, we've collected fifty-one point nine percent of our total levy. And you can also see for our annual budget, our revenues that we budgeted are forty million, ninety-three thousand, seven forty-one. And at the end of March, we had collected fifty-five point thirty-three percent of our budgeted revenues. That's a little more than halfway through the year, so things are trending along, I think, where we would expect them to. And then at, at the bottom with expenditures, our current year-to-date expenditures were twenty-seven, seven hundred, twenty, twenty-two million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-one. And we had budgeted for the year forty million, nine hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred forty-nine. So our expenditures were at fifty-five point sixty-five percent of our budgeted. The very bottom, kind of on the right, that very bottom figure says three million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred forty. That again just shows our fund balance for the end of March. Now it's covered up, there it is, at the very bottom there, three million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred forty. So that's the fund balance in our general fund as of March thirty-first. So that concludes our budget status report.
I have a question. On my pack, in my packet, it's page one seventy-seven. I think it's, it's the slide right before expenditures, the last revenue slide. What is it that accounts for like the current year-to-date state? You know, that purple is nearly eighteen million, so why do we, what accounts for having more state funds at this time, this year compared to this time in previous years? I'm curious.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So there was a, an increase in the apportionment or the funding that we're getting through the prototypical school model, school funding model for staff that was from the state legislature that resulted in salary increases. And also, when you look at our staffing comparison in, in the years where we were going through the pandemic, we may have had some changes in our staffing this year that also could be attributed to some of that increase.
An increase in revenue?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at, it's not this slide, it's.
I might be looking at the wrong slide.
It's under revenues.
The revenues by source?
Yes, revenues by source, yeah, one more, that one. The purple state being close to eighteen million.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
As I, when I first said.
The state of apportionment, yeah.
It's from an increase in the salaries and the funding that we're getting for staff.
The formula they use to give us, okay, that's interesting.
It's the inflationary factor, they call it, that they adjust, actually, all state-funded portions of the budget, some for personnel, although only the people who are paid for by the prototypical model, but also for materials and technology and what we call MSOCs, operating costs.
And I think our enrollment, if that's, if it's higher than we would also receive, a greater apportionment.
That's true.
I had a question on that very last slide you had, if we could go back to that. Now this is total expenditures, this was what we have actually spent?
Yes, as of March thirty first.
And this was what we projected?
This is what we're, we budgeted for the school year, for the whole year.
It looks like we did pretty well.
Well, there's more school, by the end of the school year, we should be at ninety-nine point nine-nine percent.
Yeah.
Because it's only fifty-five percent of the, of that amount.
But. We're at fifty-five point sixty-five percent of what we budgeted. And if you look at where we are at this point in time in the school year, that we're right about where we should be.
Remembering that our fiscal year ends August thirty-first and we continue to have expenses like salaries that we pay throughout the summer.
Yeah, right.
Other salaries and other operational costs that just continue on past the end of the school year.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, thank you, we're basically on target then.
It seems to be.
That's what I'm hearing.
This is my first year going through, but it feels like we're right on target and the numbers seem to reflect that.
Well, there's a, just as we, as you've gone through, that there's just an alarming number of things in which you're on target.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan, great. I continue to appreciate the clarity of your presentation and your visual aids.
Yes, thank you for the enlargement of the, that part right there with the month-end fund balance there. My eyes are appreciating it.
You're welcome.
Good deal.
Thank you. Is there, are there any teaching and learning updates?
There are a couple of things. And one thing I do want to note, we did send a communication to our community yesterday via Facebook. There is a lot of press around the state about other school districts that are facing severe financial difficulty right now for a variety of reasons, for decisions that they needed to make when we were going through the pandemic, for declining enrollment in many situations, for the uncertainty of what the state will fund or should fund or is funding, and that impact on the decisions that districts had to have made in their budgeting process. So we did want to communicate very surely to our community that while they see that in many places around the state, from the east side to the west side, big districts to small, North Mason is not a district that is facing any kind of financial uncertainty right now. Under, following the guidance of the school board, our district continues to be very frugal in its fiscal policy and application and use of our resources. We make the hard decisions when we have to, keeping in mind that when we have to make some cuts in expenditures, we look for ways to do that so that we can continue to provide the best possible learning opportunities and experiences for our students. So we are really proud of that fact and we are fortunate in that we have been very frugal. Sometimes we've been forced to be, but it has helped us make the right decisions and that we are a district that is growing in enrollment. Thank you. So I, I wanted to share that we had shared that communication with our community.
Yeah, thank you.
Then today was one of many meetings we've had lately with our building leaders to start, even though we're still working on this year, we're planning for next year. And part of that planning is doing a needs analysis and looking, a needs assessment and looking at what's working, what's not, what data do we have, what is it telling us? We are requiring this year that as part of writing their school improvement plans, their CSIPS, that each, each building, not. CSIPS, that each, each building, not just the ones that are required to by the state, will be doing a thorough needs assessment. That will, information will be included in the plans that you'll read later over the summer, and that will be available, but as we're looking forward to next year as well. And so one of the things that they were looking at today was looking at data disaggregated by student subgroups. We were looking at attendance, we were looking at discipline, we were looking at passing rates, and looking at that as a whole, as male versus female, high poverty versus the rest of the population, students of color versus the population, students experiencing homelessness versus the rest of the population. And what we're looking for there is there a disparity between how any of those subgroups are performing as compared to the whole group, because if a subgroup is performing less well than the general population in the district, then we need to figure out something better to do for that particular group of students. And so the principals have really been digging into that data, they are continuing, were continuing that conversation with their building leadership teams, and all of that will inform the planning that they do for next year, and it will inform any decisions we make about any adjustments in staffing at buildings, or how they receive resources to meet the needs of the students. So very powerful work going on that you will be hearing more about. I also want to share with you, we were, are very pleased that we are able to have a strong partnership with all sorts of different community organizations that support members of our community. One of those organizations that in the past year and a half or so that we built a stronger partnership with is the Guatemalan consulate in Seattle. And so we have developed a partnership to be able to help them, help our families, do the things they need to do, to be in compliance with every rule and regulation that they need to be. And so we have, in conjunction with the Guatemalan consulate, hosted two events outside of the school day, so that families can meet, or individuals, Guatemalan citizens residing in the state can meet with folks from the consulate for services that they need to, for whatever that reason is. And they've sent us a really nice letter that I received thanking us for that, that opportunity to serve folks here, because sometimes it's really hard for individuals to make it to Seattle, to the consulate, to get whatever they need help with, and then they can, if they can do that out in communities, then they can be more effective participants in their communities going forward. So I'm really, I think that's a great example of developing partnerships, and I'm proud of us for doing that, and helping support our families be positive citizens in both countries. So that's wonderful.
Very good.
Thank you. Are there any other?
I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but we'll stop there.
Our upcoming board letter columnists this month is myself, I need to get going on that. Next month is Eric, June is John, July we have Leanna, and August we have Laura. And now we are at the Legislative Representative Report, that's myself. I don't have too many updates, we're, we were gearing up for, this was the final week of the legislative session, so we're hoping to hear some good news, it sounds like today, maybe tonight, on the budget. You know, I think it was an interesting legislative session, I was reading through this newsletter from WASDA, just about the sheer number of, you know, they were tracking a hundred and twenty education-related bills at the start of this, and about, you know, thirty-five were left as of last Friday, you know, and we'll just see what happens. I wanted to also share that the Director Area Four Regional Meeting for WASDA is this Saturday in Squim. The topic is "Top Issues Facing School Boards Today: A Look at the Legal Policy and Leadership Implications of, you know, Today's Issues." If you are interested in attending that, let me know, I can forward this email to you, that's in Squim. I do not have any other, any other updates. I'm curious, Dana, if you have any updates related to legislative issues like the TK bill, or...
Yeah, last I heard, the TK bill is still alive. It has been amended considerably when it moved from the House to the Senate. We have heard that the sponsors in the House are pretty firm about the language they started with, and so when it goes back and they try to reconcile what the two different Houses of the legislature voted on, that might, that might stall it, and it might not move forward at all this session. From a school district standpoint, the amendments that the Senate placed on the bill made it something that would be much more doable and much more in line with our efforts on serving the needs of our kids in our community, and so it would be a bill that we could live with. And so it will be interesting to see what happens there. You know, one of the things that I have heard from the various representatives that we have in Olympia on a regular basis, our policy wonks and our lobbyists, is this has been a really hard year for education. It is, our legislators who are in the majority in, in our legislature right now are really not interested in talking about the needs of education this year, and trying to get any of the things that we need to improve the budget for kids, what's available to help schools do what they need to do to support kids, has been a huge uphill climb and very discouraging. So I think we, we will be charged, all of us, we need to charge ourselves. And we are fortunate in Mason County because our three representatives that in our region are very pro-education and very helpful for us, but we'll need to also reach out to those in surrounding areas and really get some questions answered and help people understand better what is really happening in schools and what the needs are. You know, one of the things I saw in one of the debates was a very influential member of the House of Representatives saying that he didn't understand why we kept asking for more money for special education, because every time they meet, they give us a bunch, a lot of money. And you know, that is true, but every time they meet and they give us a lot of money, they don't give us the amount that we told them that we needed to do the job. They never give us the amount we need, they give us a small part of that. So yes, they give us money every time, but it's never getting the job done, and the job's just getting bigger. And so we have to figure out how to build more trust in the, in our statements, in our message with the folks who serve in the legislature over the, over the next few months.
Okay, something else that I've noticed as far as this session goes, that there's a lot of disagreement between the two houses. I was talking to some folks at WASDA, and they said this is the worst they've seen it in a long time. A lot of the bills, I was watching a transportation bill, and it's gone, it went from the House back to the Senate, back to the House, now it's back in the Senate, it's just ping-pong, back and forth, and there, it's not getting anywhere. And it's not just this bill, but lots of other bills are doing it. There seems to be some division not, between the houses and even some of the parties, there's a disagreement, because this bill, it was started by an influential, influential member of the ranking party, and who was also Chair of the Education Committee on the Senate Side. By the time it got over, got to the House, it was completely destroyed. I was talking to Superintendent Reichdahl, he said, like Superintendent was saying that there's not, the majority party isn't focusing as much on these things, he's like, "House Democrats hate me right now." Those were his exact words.
There's a lot of infighting.
Yeah, there's lots of infighting, lots of disagreement, so...
And it helps no one.
Yeah. It may stall some things, but it may change some things back that may help, so we'll see.
Thank you for that. Yeah, that's, it's been so boring.
The problem is, infighting within the Democratic Party is preventing them from doing progressive things on education, we would expect.
No, no, it, I mean, yes and no. Really, the Democratic Party went into the session saying, "We don't want to talk about education."
Really?
"We want to talk about housing, so just be quiet." And there, there is personal animosity towards Superintendent Reichdahl from strong leadership positions in the Democratic leadership in both houses, but most particularly in the House of Representatives, and that had, which has really had an win, and also actually towards the governor.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
So when those two folks came forward to say, for example, that the TK bill as originally written was really bad for kids, instead of, as in the past, having people go, "Okay, we agree with you, let's do something about that." Members of their own party said, "Well, if they said that, then we disagree, we'll vote against what they said." And so it's a different experience than it has been in that party this session.
Yeah, it's really been an illuminating thing to be a part of and to witness, so. I'm gonna move on to our assurance of organizational performance and policy review in our monitoring reports. Up on the docket, we've got ER 11, which is our district calendar. I will entertain a motion on this monitoring report.
I'll forward a motion to approve ER 11 district calendar.
Any discussion?
To find the superintendent in compliance.
Correct.
Yeah, I would like to note that we have taken a little bit different approach to this report. Normally, when we bring this report, we are including a recommendation for a calendar for not the subsequent year, but the one after.
Right, I was gonna say there's no actual calendar.
And we already have next year's calendar adopted, but we have been, we've had a committee examining the idea of building a more balanced calendar, not, not a complete transition for North Mason, because we're pretty close, than where we are. And they have had lots of meetings, they are, different members of that group have gone on different trips to visit places where things are happening that might inform and help us apply those ideas to even strengthen our school offerings for kids by looking at a balanced calendar transition. And so Laura Pugh has been leading that work for us this year, and she, and working with her committee, feels like before the end of this school year, certainly May or, in our May or June meeting, they will have a recommendation to the board about whether, whether and what adjustments we should make in looking at a balanced calendar for the 24, 25 school year. So before we adopt a new calendar, that then we would come back and say, "Okay, the committee recommended, so let's change it." We're holding that until we have that recommendation.
And you did include that in the response, so, thank you. Any other discussion on this policy? All right, hearing none, the student advisory vote, all in favor?
I say aye.
Okay, board vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Policy review, last month we reviewed ER 12 and ER 9, the communication with the public and the student conduct policies. This is our chance to make any revisions or further discuss these policies. Is there any, you know, needed changes that anyone feels we need to make? Okay, hearing none, we are at adjournment, which is wild to me. For the good of the order, I will go ahead and start down here, and start with you, John.
Oh, well, I was there at the event, and I've been on this board so long, I remember the last time the helicopter landed, and I have pictures. And the only difference this year is that our football field is so fancy that the helicopter couldn't land there because it wasn't delicate enough. So they landed at the ball field, and I figured that out, because I think I got the tip from you, and then I ran over, and that, so you saw that great shot of the helicopter I was able to get. So I thought, you know, Morgan was talking about glitches, at least from my standpoint, other than starting late, there didn't seem to be any glitch, once it started going. So you pulled it off well.
Thank you.
You ought to get more credit if there were glitches, because I certainly couldn't see them.
Yeah, sure.
And I wanted to get home, but I was having, I know, I appreciate that Dana put the caution in about seriousness, and I think that that is an indication of the importance of what this school district is doing, in addition to what was said about the Guatemalan thing, and our budget, and so many other things. I mean, it really gives you something to be proud about, that we are not afraid of confronting our students and our public with the truth about themselves and their habits, and the consequences of those. And so I think that this was both from a participatory standpoint, everybody was there in the covered area, the stadium, which is pretty remarkable in itself, you know, that we have a place for them, and it didn't seem to rain on our parade. So I thought that the thing went very well, and I hope will be a, something the community will note, and I'm sure the students will. I did have another comment, and that is, I read a piece in the New York Times last Sunday that made a point of a huge national issue on reading effectiveness, and how nationwide some of the most popular programs have been tested and found wanting, and that there is a huge, there is a wave, would not be too strong a term, a wave of grassroots fury, you know, about this, and always looking out for a political tsunami, you know, to see if we need to do anything to prevent one. I was curious as to how we were doing. The key thing about the report was that there are certain science-based approaches to reading that seem to be very effective and are working where applied. The problem is, they're not being applied everywhere.
And when I read that article, I recalled some of the presentations we've had from, in Belfor Elementary, I want to say, but that's what I thought about, because they had, they told us exactly that, you know, that there's been this changeover of like, "Okay, we're not teaching reading the way we should be teaching it, we need to be focusing on phonics and not just having kids memorize passages," or whatever. It should be the actual science of how to, how a word comes together, and I was encouraged, because I was like, "I think we're doing that here."
Well, we are, but I also want to note that if you're in education long enough, we cycle through, we cycle back and forth from phonics to not phonics. Phonics to not phonics.
Yeah, I've heard this before.
This one has the research, that one has the research, so we're in a certain part of the cycle right now. But the truth of the matter is that different kids need different approaches to learn how to read. Some kids cannot learn how to read without a phonics-based approach. Some kids will never learn how to read with a phonics-based approach. So you have to have a balanced approach to teaching reading and literacy for kids that exposes kids to all the different ways to access and learn how to read. And I mean, I will use myself as an example, when I was in first grade, my neighboring district around here that I was in first grade at was a completely phonics-based approach. And so kids in first grade either got to read sentences... And so kids in first grade either got to read sentences that had little short things that, because they were assumed to be ready for that. If they didn't think you had all the skills yet, then you had to start with this phonics approach where every single letter of the alphabet had its own color on a color chart, and background was black, like a Black Light poster. And if you were really quiet, I know you can imagine that I was a really quiet little first grader, but if you were really quiet and didn't participate in class, that was kind of part of the assessment, she must not know what she's doing, she must not be ready. So I had to sit every day and look at that poster, and every day at reading time, about five minutes in, the office had to call my mom and say, "Come pick Dana up, she has a fever of 103, she needs to go home." After six weeks, my mom said, "You're calling me at exactly the same time every day, you need to figure out what's wrong at school." And so they let me be in the other group, even though they didn't think I could handle it, and I could learn to read, reading sentences that were words that made sense together. I couldn't learn to read looking at a hot pink lowercase a over and over and over again. And so different, that's just one kid's example, but, and it's a pretty extreme one, but kids need different things to approach reading. So while there is some science that supposes, that supports using phonics to teach reading, there is also science that supports using a more whole language approach to reading, and to do it effectively, you need both, and you need the quality teachers who are able to determine who needs what, when, and apply that, which is what we have in North Mason, and which is why our focus on using Universal Design for Learning, which is a structure for helping us understand who needs what and how can they best affect or access the information, and then giving the kids the opportunity to use their best tools to learn. That's why that is going to work for us, because we are looking at balancing that approach and making sure that our teams are developing and having the tools to give kids the opportunities to recognize what they need to do to learn and then be able to apply that.
Thank you, thank you, Dana.
That was very informative.
Thank you.
And it has utterly shaken my faith in the New York Times. This is a very serious thing. That was a really, that was superior to what I read in the Times, just what you said right now, and it makes sense. Is it, would you hazard that there are districts that, it is our balanced approach? I'm ready to be persuaded of that, because I've seen it, so many reports across, across the line, but would you say that other people are not, other districts do not have that aim of balance? Because it requires a judgment on the part of the teachers and the leadership of how you, when is the right time for this, and when is the right time for that for this particular student?
You know, I'm not sure I would say that, John, because I think we are at a point in the history of public education and in teaching literacy in our country, and we are at an understanding of how so many, every single child comes to the classroom with different backgrounds and different strengths and different areas to grow. And so we're in a different place than when I was in first grade, and everybody is in a cookie cutter program, right?
Yeah.
And so across the country, we're all learning as educators, and we're all working to, to figure out how to use these approaches and tools to better individualize the learning experience for students. So I think there are, yes, there are people who are strong proponents of phonics. We have staff members who are strong proponents of phonics. We also have staff members who are strong proponents of a more whole language approach to learning. But what people are getting more wrapped around is the idea that one size fits all does not fit our kids. And so there's research that supports many different ways to teach and to learn, and we have to make sure that all our kids have what they need. And I think that is growing across the country. I think I am really proud of where our staff is in that growth. But I think as a country, we're all coming to that understanding, maybe not people who aren't necessarily in the classroom engaged every day, maybe people who are on the outside looking in, or, you know, but I think those people who are, as you would say, boots on the ground with children, understand how important that is to, to have a lot of tools available to, for kids to be able to get to the learning that they need to, however they need to get there.
Well, I really appreciate that, because I can remember, probably even before I was on the school board, there were debates about this, and not having any association with education at this level, I was wondering, what's that all about? Everybody seems to be so fussed about it. And now, I can understand that, because I, among the things I've learned in being here is the necessity for teachers, as well as administrators, to make reasoned judgments, you know, on the basis of a lot of different particulars, and then the kid, you know, in front of them. And so I, everything you say is part of a philosophy I've sort of learned in, in being here, so that, that would explain why I'm not receiving phone calls. It's not that I'm asking for them, but I mean, these were districts around the country where people are being run off the board because of this issue, and I just didn't sense that temperature around here, and maybe there's a reason why I haven't.
Well, you know, we're looking hard, because we want to do better every day for the kids that we're serving. We, we're not resting on any laurels and saying, "We figured everything out," but we're working really hard to get better every day at what we do in every classroom for every child.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Dana, and I think this is presumptively an example of the dog that didn't bark, you know?
But, John, I'm gonna.
Okay, sure.
Yes, thank you. Leanna, do you have any more comments?
No, I appreciate the back and forth here.
I think it's a great discussion, yeah.
It's all good. I have a son that has a different type of learning, and he's my chemical twin, you know, like, we're, we've got a lot going on emotionally and all that, and I love all the different opportunities that we have as a school district, in every level of elementary, middle school, especially middle school, and their poor little hormones between eight and 15 and beyond, but, you know, just some kids take it a little harder than some, and then it hits them at different times, so the learning part is stressful. I was one of them. I learn a different way, but I'm really smart, and my kid's like, super smart, but he's one of those kids, so.
I appreciate it. Other than that? Okay. I wanted to make a couple comments. I'm on the board for Barnacles and Bees, it's a preschool program here in North Mason, and enrollment is open now for the fall, for anybody listening out in the universe, for three to like, grade school. They've got programs, and they're expanding, it's gonna be at Belfor State Park also this year, and the Wetlands. So, I'm, they're also looking for more board members, if anybody's interested in.
At this, when they do at the state park, do the, if the parents, do they drop the kids off there, do they have to pay like, the $10 thing if they don't have the pass?
I don't think they're just dropping the child off and they're not parking. No, no. My, one of my really good friends, moving on to a different topic, is a teacher at the Shoreline School District, and that's one of those that you're kind of referencing with, like, huge financial craziness, and she texted me a picture of the board meeting, the school board meeting she went to, and it was, I mean, like, this entire room packed into like, the hallway, and they were, I think their meeting started at seven, and she said it was over at 11:30 PM.
Wow.
They had the meeting first, and then some comments, and like, I just was floored, but they've got like, a $9 million shortfall, and they had somebody who forgot to, they spent their, they spent Esser money that they didn't have, because they didn't fill out the form correctly, and they never got the money, but it was already spent, so lots of people stressed. So I think, like I say that, to commend the staff here, and just piggyback on all the praise on the budget presentation from Dan, like, I think it's really, like, relieving for us to not have to be here till midnight worried about problems like that, so thank you. I wanted to ask if we have very many student board member applications for next year?
Not very many, we are getting more though, from more than just the high, the North Mason High School, and so.
Oh, like, oh, yes.
We have James Taylor and Home Link, and so we, we will have enough to look at.
Oh, that's exciting, okay, good.
And we are still encouraging more kids to apply, and kids outside of the usual group of kids who might be interested, so, or have been in the past.
Awesome, yeah, that's great, that's great.
Do we have a deadline for them at all?
No, we, we had a deadline, but we're gonna extend it, because we want kids, there were so many other things they were worried about with changing trimester and stuff that we want to.
Oh, okay.
So we'll do some additional announcements and things, and we'll work together to get.
Did you say there was a student from James Taylor?
We, we do have interest from students from James Taylor and Home Link, or at least, you know, at least one, maybe more, and so that's very exciting, because I would like to have all of our programs or schools represented.
Um, I also wanted, for my last comment, just to acknowledge the passing of Ray Mau. We had all heard about it, I, I knew him, of course, he's, he's very involved in the community, an architect of these buildings, the new high school, I think there's deeper connections on, from other board members, but I just wanted to acknowledge that at the meeting, that we're very sorry for his loss, and we'll share any details with the community, I think, once we know them, about any like, donations if people want to make or whatnot.
His wife is really open about it, and connecting with her and the port of Duato, if people want to send any asking questions and stuff, they've been pretty open about it.
Because he was the port commissioner there, right?
He was actually the chair there, right when I was leaving, that was, he came on right at that time, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, he was, and actually, Ray was a driving force, along with some of our board members, in getting the bond passed.
Right.
So that we could have him be the architect on these buildings. So he has had a very profound impact on kids, both here on our campuses and in youth sports in the community, and he is a community member who will be sorely missed.
Yeah, that's terrible.
If I might just add, one of the great things about, he worked well, I know with, with you and the team, but I found an additional point of pride, that we had an architect that was one of our own, you know, that came from this school.
Yeah.
And that was a kind of an additional reassurance, that there was not only know-how in this, but, well, what can I say, love, dedication, kind of school patriotism to the community. And so it's this kind of guy that, you know, is a real loss to the community, and I think to the district.
Good point, John.
It's a huge loss. Eric, any comments?
Just thank you for all the volunteers that were out there today, for that thing. It's really great, I know it takes an army to get that done, so amazing job. So, that's it.
Okay, you said that was nine o'clock tomorrow morning? In the high school gym, probably?
Tomorrow morning, yeah, high school gym.
Okay, I would just echo what you have all said about Ray, and he was also on our scholarship foundation board as well, so he will be missed there too. And I would like to tell you, Morgan, you and the other student school board representatives were featured in the last American School Board Journal. I meant to bring it to you.
Oh.
Your picture is right there.
Wow.
So I will bring it, so that you can have that.
Oh, please bring it.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
It's very cool, yeah.
Wow.
We're in the presence of celebrity.
We are. It's, and I also had a picture of you dancing at the LaSta, when they all went up on the stage with.
Oh, they put that picture?
Yeah, they printed it.
I threw, I get that magazine.
You gotta look at that.
I'll have a look at it.
Yeah, so, anyway, that's all I have.
So when you asked if I had anything else, I did not write a note down about something that I did want to share, for the good of the order. We do plan to offer summer, a summer school program this summer. We, by the end of next week, we will be advertising for staff for the program. By early May, we will advertise what students can apply to participate. So we're looking at a two-pronged program. We will have one prong that will be an opportunity for credit recovery for high school students, and both summer school programs will give kids time off, and then summer school, and then a little more time off before school starts in August. So it will be a three-week program for both the high school and the elementary slash middle school program, I'll tell you about in a second, July 24th through August 10th. And it'll be four and a half hours a day, two meals. There will be potential for transportation for kids who might need that, but.
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday. So the, the element, we're going to, at elementary through middle school, focus on offering seats to rising fourth through seventh graders, so current third through sixth grade students. This is a learning and developing literacy, literacy skills program through learning and this skills to, to.
Animate?
Create animation, and to create animated stories.
Wow.
We are partnering with a program called, with a company called Storymaker. The developer of Storymaker is Terry Thorin, who was one of the producers of, some of you are young enough or old enough to remember. Of the Rugrats television series, which was one of the very first, most important, fun series on Nickelodeon when it began as a children's network. And so he has left Hollywood and is really focused on supporting education, and then meeting the needs of kids, so he's developed this program. So our kids will have an opportunity to develop and create their own animated videos on content. At the, we plan to hold a mini film festival slash awards ceremony on the last night of, or day of the summer school program, that will be open to our community members, and so we're really, really excited about this opportunity.
That's cool. Yeah, I think that's cool.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, the high school is the credit recovery piece of that.
And high school is credit recovering, and so, yeah.
Cool.
Do you mind if I add one last thing, Gregor, they're really quick? As far as the crash goes, we ask that no one post or advertise any of this until tomorrow after about 11, once the assembly's over. I know we did show a few pictures here, that's fine, but we still want to maintain the effect of that these kids are gone. And so we just ask that no one post about this until after it's done taking place at about 11 tomorrow.
And then it's okay to share with the public?
Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Okay, Director Campbell, you are processing the board's self-assessment tonight.
Well, it was not difficult. The general meeting behavior, completely satisfactory, with very well-planned agenda. I think our discussion and our participation.
I don't think these work anymore.
I think we are satisfactory in all regards. I think everybody's participation in this meeting, and the various things that we discuss is discussed, speaks for itself. So, and the governance principles review, as anyone can see who looks at our agenda, we do follow policy governance, and we are in compliance with our own rules of being in compliance. And so I think that the overall is satisfactory.
Thank you.
I'm in an organization that doesn't have policy governance, and I happen to be president this year, and we interviewed, you know, we have to judge our CEO, the sta, I missed the standards, I missed the specificity of it. And so I really commend us all for continuing the tradition of policy governance. If you look at other organizations, not even of our species, the prob- If you look at other organizations, not even of our species, the problem of assessment remains, and I'm, I think we're very well-served by this program.
Thank you. Our next uh school board meeting is on May eighteenth here um in the district office at six thirty PM. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven forty. Thank you all for being here.